Good evening, welcome to the July 9th, 2014, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We have one item on the consent agenda tonight, and that is a mandatory referral for the replacement of the Dejarnet Lane Pump Station #13. Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department is applicant. Is there anybody on the staff or in the audience, or members of the planning commission, that'd like this removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Move for approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have one public hearing scheduled this evening. That's a zoning application for approximately 1.1 acres to be rezoned from RS10 to RM16 at 626 Dillon Lane. Mr. Tim Holder is applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, sir. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider rezoning property that's approximately 1.1 acres, and it's currently zoned RS10, and that's a single-family residential district. Under the current zoning, it could be developed with approximately four single-family homes, each on their own lot of record. The request is for you to consider to change that zone from the RS10, or single-family district zone, to RM16, and that's multifamily residential district. The properties to the north, east, and south are zoned RS10 as well, and are mostly single-family detached homes. Adjacent to this property to the north is a home which is, also has a car repair business, or antique restoration business, and just north of that property is the apartment community that's currently partially developed, or a little over halfway developed, called Dillon Lane. Richland Falls has been renamed to Richland Falls. Across the street is property zone PRD, and that's planned residential district, and that is for an apartment community as well, which is located across South Rutherford Boulevard, from the Walmart located on South Rutherford Boulevard. This property was zoned RS10 shortly after it was annexed, and as I mentioned, under the current zone, it could be developed with approximately four single-family homes. If this property were to be rezoned, it could be developed with, it would have a right to be developed with 16 dwelling units per acre, because it does exceed a one acre. However, there will be some site design criteria that'll have to be met as regards to solid waste management, stormwater management, landscaping, and mandatory screening, parking setbacks, and those other design requirements, which lead staff to believe that practically probably approximately 12 dwelling units per acre could be developed on this property, although the zoning entitlement would allow more. Mr. Matt Taylor is here this evening, and he's representing the applicant, and he can speak more to their intent. The request, of course, is for you to consider zoning the property from RS10 to RM16, and you'll conduct a public hearing, after which you'll forward your recommendation to city council. Mr. Taylor, do you want to offer some additional information?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor, of SEC here in town. We do represent the landowner and the applicant, Mr. Tim Holder. Mr. Holder has requested this. After having his property on the market for quite some time, he's not really found anybody that's interested in developing or purchasing the single-family home that's there. He's had several people interested in doing something a little higher density. When Mr. Holder came to us and asked about that, we sat down with him, looked around the surrounding areas, noticed, you know, Richland Falls, some of the newer townhomes, the apartments to the east, and then some multifamily zoning to the south as well. Seems to be a very desirable offering in the area, and so, and that was based on what he had also seen in his offers to purchase the property. So, he does not have any intentions or plans. He's merely trying to sell the property that he currently owns, so I can't speak to any specifics of what would possibly be built there. Ms. Green did go over the limitations of the property. There are several. Because it'd be multifamily zoning, there'd be no parking or building in the front setback, being a corner lot that heavily restricts the lot, we would have to meet the stormwater requirements and the buffer requirements. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Young.
Ms. Green, how do we do solid waste on a small project?
If the project is less than 75 dwelling units, or if it's more than 75 dwelling units, they have to use a trash compactor. If it's more than 15 units, they have to use a dumpster. But if it's less than those 15 units, then they can use the city's solid waste management.
With the cannons, the pickup?
With the cannons, that's right, with the carts. They need to design a proper cart storage area, but they could use the city's system.
And realistically, they could probably only get 12 at best on this, with the setbacks and the stormwater and all the things that both of you all have mentioned?
At staff's estimate, yep, 12 would be the practical number.
Is that, to follow up Mr. Young's question, is that true if they went to three stories, or what are they allowed to build up to?
They can build three stories. That would be permitted in either RS12 or RS16 zones.
And if they went three stories, would it be still 12 units, or would it be 16?
It would. One of the factors is that parking takes up quite a bit of space, and so, they may be able to take up less space with the structures, but that more units requires more parking, and of course, the buffers will not change, buffer requirements will not change, neither will the stormwater management.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Taylor?
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. I'm just full of questions tonight.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you may ask all you wish.
Dillon Lane is, what would you categor, how would you categorize that as a city street?
I think we've called it a substandard street, and whenever we've seen any new development on Dillon Lane, we've required them to do some street improvements to Dillon Lane that could be in the form of a turn lane, or just some improvements to Dillon Lane. It was developed as a, just a residential street, but we've seen it change in the past several years.
Would this applicant be required to escrow money for that improvement?
I'm not certain what we would require from the development, but we would certainly look at what they can participate in, when, what types of roadway improvements they could participate in. Sometimes we prefer them to go ahead and construct the improvements, because that's more beneficial, and if it's really not practical, then we will escrow that money, or take fees in lieu of construction.
But that's pretty much standard operating procedure?
It would be.
Thank you. I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward to speak. Let me briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. We'll open the public hearing. We'll open the microphone for anybody who'd like to come up and speak either for or against this proposal. Please state your name and give your address, if you would. Make all your comments to the planning commission. If you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, and attempt to answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. Keep all your questions and comments to no more than three minutes, and we'll close the public hearing, and then we will deliberate on our decision as far as recommending approval to the city council, or not recommending approval. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing this time, and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hi, my name is Lauren Robertson, and I live at 2013 Hole Beach Drive. To give reference as to where I live, I live on the property that is directly behind that lot. My fence backs up to that lot. I, I've never done this, so I would like to, I suppose, oppose what they're asking to do. I would prefer that there not be any multifamily housing, or like apartment living on that lot. I would not be opposed to the lot being split into maybe like a four single-family home lot, as suggested. The reason being for my refusal to this is, one, I purchased a property approximately a month and a half ago. I purchased a foreclosed home that had been vacated, and have taken that property and included a lot of property value in that by fencing my property, taking care of the landscaping and everything, and quite frankly, kind of cleaning up the area where I live now. Of course, having apartment living, or any kind of condo living right behind my property would not only remove privacy from my yard, which I attempted to achieve with the fencing, but it would also create a big problem in resale value to me. I do have experience, as my father is a real estate developer in the state of California, and I understand how much a building, or whether it be a single-family home, or a multifamily building can absolutely affect and damage property values for many reasons, and a lot of those reasons could very well be determined because of who moves into those properties. Of course, there would be no regulation as to who's able to live in those apartments. I work myself at the university, so I deal with college students every day, and I understand that that would be quite a living situation for college students. I also understand that that would bring noise, it could bring potential problems, it could increase the crime rate. Of course, that would be the hope that it doesn't, but that's just a concern that I do have, as far as my property, my property potentially being damaged, the resale of my property value going down, and having the residential neighborhood that I chose to live in no longer being seen as a residential neighborhood. I, myself, just moved from an apartment complex for that reason, and chose to purchase a home, because I like the aspect of living in a neighborhood and having a quiet home to stay at, and be able to take care of my own property, and not be impeded by another property behind me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Who would like to be next?
Hello, my name's David Hofer. I live at 2020 Horn Castle Drive, pretty much across the street, on that corner where the subdivision's looking to go up. I've lived in this house for 13 years. It's been nice, up until, you know, these things have started going on. As I think she mentioned earlier, one of the apartment complexes is not even completely done. There's others going up in the area as well, and I can't see it being practical to add more apartments that close. As other lady stated, I hate to think about the idea of my property value dropping because of this, and I'm just really against it.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer.
Good evening, my name is Jermaine Ezell. I live 2016 Horn Castle Drive, and that is directly across from this property. And I too feel like the other, my other two neighbors, in reference to the rezoning of this property, and some of the general concerns that we have heard thus far, you know, I'm in compliance with them, you know, as far as our single residential community being turned over to, you know, just being made subject to the housing complex that they're trying to build, you know, making it maybe unsafe in some aspects. One of my main objectives, when I moved into the community, I'm a Habitat recipient, so part of the program was to help provide stability, added comforts, unlike what we had in our other housing apartments that we were living in. So, I just wanted to have an environment that was conducive for the upbringing of my children, where there would be a longevity investment in knowing my neighbors, you know. The rental property would cause for, you know, maybe short-term renters, you know. I don't know the policies that'll go forth with them, but from where I stand right now, I just don't think it would be a good idea, you know, from like going toward, I think it's the north part of the block, where a lot of the college apartments are, the Gables and stuff like that. We have intrusions of the police. Whenever there's a problem over there, they seem to invade our little residential area, you know, as if it was us, or whatever, which disturbs us at times, whether it's partying, or, you know, just, you know, carrying on in that matter. So, I also know too, that, and I speak this not as a representative on behalf of Habitat, but they were interested in getting the property to try to build four single residential homes on it, but I don't know if it was too high. The cost may have been too high. And they actually built four right across from it, which were the, a home build project that I had a hand in, and building four units, the same, that would fit right across. But I oppose the building, you know, of this new 16-unit building, or the rezoning of it, you know, for those reasons.
Thank you, Ms. Ezell. Anybody else? Last chance. Okay, seeing anybody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Questions from members of the planning commission?
Ms. Green, I have a question for you, please.
Yes, sir.
Is it unusual, or not unusual, for us to zone this, and then down the road, somebody comes in and brings us a plan? Can we see a plan before this is rezoned?
It's not unusual for us to zone property to a specific use, or to a zone that would allow certain types of uses before we see a plan. We would expect to see the plan in the future. This is a somewhat speculative nature, in that sometimes we see folks who have a contract on property requesting the zoning, but in this case, Mr. Holder's the property owner, and he's requesting the zoning change, so that he can actually market it for multifamily. Of course, he could not market it. It's multifamily with the current zoning, and so, it's certainly possible, and it's also possible that it could be used single-family in the future, although I expect that's not Mr. Holder's goals.
Could you put up the zoning map?
Sure.
Please.
With the cable department, pull it up.
Bob, you're going to help me find it in the past.
Well...
Additionally, there's an aerial photograph that shows the zoning as well.
On TV.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I wanted to see the zoning, though, as far as that goes. The surrounding area is all zoned?
Everything that's yellow is RS10.
The area that's yellow is RS10, single-family. The area that has the stripes, the sort of an orange color, is, are both the planned developments with the multifamily zoning. One of them being Richland Falls, and the other being the Sterling Gables. The area that's colored red is a commercial zone, commercial highway. That's about all I see up there.
Well, I just have a problem with putting this multifamily zoning stuck in the midst of the single-family zoning right there, and I think, at best, I'd want to see a plan development come in, but I really have a hard time just rezoning it to RS16. Of course, I agree with the things that these folks have said, and I think we also need to look at it. Would we do this, you know, if it was, we've had a lot of neighborhoods like Stratford Hall, and, you know, Georgetown, we're going to be facing a lot of other neighborhoods. We would do it there, but not do it here, you know, or not do it there and do it here. So I just think we need to be consistent with it. I just, I don't see us, I don't see me supporting this proposal.
Question. Ms. Green, if this fails to pass, would the applicant have an opportunity to come back with a plan to show this group, and meet with the neighbors and show them?
Sure, the applicant would have several options if the vote tonight is to not recommend approval. They could move forward to city council with a negative recommendation from planning commission, and then leave up to council to vote. Of course, that's usually not what the decision, that's usually not the decision made, because if it's turned out at council, then they would have to wait 18 months before they can make another application. However, if you, if you do recommend that this not be approved, they also have the option of withdrawing their application, going back and thinking about it, and they can make another application the very next month, in September, for a plan development if they were ready. So they could choose to move forward. That's usually not something that is, that's usually not the decision that's made, because it isn't favorable to have a negative recommendation from planning commission when you've studied it. So they could, or they could just drop it altogether and decide not to move forward at all. So they could either, I don't know if Mr. Taylor has any idea what the client would choose.
Ms. Green, I have another question. Would you, for our audience and our guests tonight, explain in a short, very short version, what a plan development is?
Sure. A plan development would be a specific zoning for property that is very specific. We require the clients to come up with a plan, and that plan is approved and agreed upon by both the planning commission and city council, and that's the only thing that's allowed. If there were to be a major deviation from the plan, they would have to go back through that legislative process. And that legislative process is something that takes approximately 120 days, and has at least two public hearings. So that would give the, the public the opportunity to look at the plans. What they normally do is come by our office and take an opportunity to look at it, and see what they're interested in, and reach out to the design team, and maybe get their own copy of the plan, study it, and make, and by studying it, they could make any recommendations for what they think might improve the plan, and maybe that would make them support it, and then it would go through council. So, it's, we call them pattern books or program books, so it's a book that becomes the zoning for the property, and it gives, it does give some specific assurances about the property, about how it can be developed. We used to see plan developments more frequently in the past, and I don't know if Mr. Adalot wants to expand upon that, but they are, it is best suited for property that's unique, maybe that has unique situations, and really needs some consideration, specific, just that property.
Okay. Ms. Johnson.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
The property that was directly across the street on Dillon Lane, that that property looks to actually front on South Rutherford Boulevard, the PRD development, and that it's, it's not complete yet, or not finished, will there be any access from that PRD development onto Dillon Lane? I just don't remember.
Yes, ma'am, there will be, but it's gated access.
Gated.
And the gate's already in place, and there is a privacy fence. One of the photographs that was in the materials, I think you can see, there's a privacy fence down through there.
I've got the photograph on the screen. If the cable department will pull it up. So that development's basically kind of used Dillon Lane as a back, and that's not a primary access, and that's not something that they...
Okay, that's what I, so all of that development will basically face and be towards South Rutherford, and that's just like an emergency.
Yes, ma'am, it is a gated access, or emergency access. I'll also add that there's some pretty, pretty large earthen berms just behind that fence. You may not be able to see them very well, but they're there.
Mr. Taylor, did you have some comments?
I think Ms. Green had asked what I thought the client would like to do, and I think he would probably prefer just to defer indefinitely. I can talk to him, see if he's willing to, if he has any idea at all on what maybe some of his potential buyers have alluded to, if they have at all, and come back maybe as a plan development, to put some restrictions on that plan, and meet with, meet with the neighbors, like you said, if, if the planning commission is okay with that.
Okay, well, tell them, you know, we're not guaranteeing success as a plan development, but, you know, so are you requesting a deferral?
I think so. Give us time to go back and do something different.
One small point.
Mr. Young.
If you look at this map, it's surrounded on three sides by RS10, single-family. So, we're carving a spot out.
That's what I had a problem with. I just don't, I didn't feel like it was good planning. Consistent with good planning. Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of this commission?
Chairman Lamb, I agree with you. I think it is a carving-out piece. I will make a motion to defer, but, Mr. Taylor, I'll be first to tell you that it, I'd take a hard look at even a plan development, but I'll, I'll at least make a leeway that we defer the project.
Sarah Second.
Second.
Motion's made, and second in all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Well, thank you everybody for coming in today and participating in the public hearing. Thank you very much. We'll move on to staff reports and other business. Mr. Adalot?
Mr. Lamb, I think we may want to explain what a deferral means. I think there's a lot of looks back there, and they don't know exactly what that means.
Okay. Mr. Adalot, why don't you give them the definition?
Deferral means that tonight, the planning commission is not making a recommendation, and it will not make a recommendation until it comes back before this body for more study. Although it may not come back as a public hearing, we will endeavor to let you know about the meeting. We have you on record, we have some names. We'll see if we can contact you if and when it comes back. I would suggest you continue to watch our planning commission agendas. They are posted on the city's website. That's www.murfreesboro10.gov. You're always welcome to call the planning staff, we'll tell you what the status of it is. Because of your participation tonight, we would, I think the planning commission would feel remiss if we didn't reach out to you before, although it may not be another public hearing, you'd want to know about it. If it moves on to the city council at some future date, there will be another public hearing, and you will receive the same kind of notice that you received for this meeting. So you've got to fail safe to make sure you know, to be able to participate if it continues.
Question.
Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Adalot, if it were to come back as anything other than a request for RM16, there would be another public hearing, would there not?
It depends. If you come back and recommend RM12 instead, the answer may be no. But if it's looking at a plan development, or if it's looking at a, some other type of zoning besides RM12, the answer would be yes, we'd have another public hearing.
And on the deferral, if they don't do anything at all, after what period of time would they have to completely resubmit?
I believe a reasonable period would be six months. After six months, this just begins to get too stale for it to really be, the conditions may change such, that it really truly needs to be another, go back to the beginning.
Okay.
And look at it.
If you have any other questions, if you want to stick around for a little while, I'm sure the staff would be glad to answer those for you. So, thank you very much for coming, and thank you, Mr. Adalot. We have a mandatory referral that Ms. Drives needs to bring up under other business. Ms. Drives?
Thank you, Chairman. If we had a lot of people to pass those down. Consolidated Utilities District has approached the water and sewer department about getting a waterline easement across portions of the Coleman Farm, and the Coleman Farm is a large tract that the water and sewer department bought a few years ago, that, for spray, or sprinkle of reused water onto the land, in order to not have it discharging into the river. Water and sewer are, is agreeable to do an easement. We're still working out a couple of details about where it will cross the roads. It shows there, it's what it's in red on the attached drawing, would be the new CUD lines. So water and sewer is fine with it, subject to working out some details, which we're confident we will, and we still need a precise legal description for it, that we expect to get in a few days, and we'd like to have your recommendation to council that this be approved, so that we can move forward with that, once we have the details in place.
Okay. Ms. Young, do you have any questions?
Of course. Do we have any refuse water lines on the Coleman Farm at this point?
I believe they have just started some spraying on some of them.
And this won't be any conflict with our new training facility?
No, we'll make sure of that.
Okay, I'm through.
Any other questions? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Subject to staff comments.
Sarah Second.
Second in most.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Adalot, do you have any other staff reports?
Yes, sir, I do. This is, might take just a short moment, but I need to go over this. The week of August 18th, or begin August 18th, is going to be a very exciting week in Murfreesboro. That will be the week that we begin a very active kickoff of the comprehensive planning process. There will be several things are scheduled for that week. First of all, on 18th, I think that our website, or a website will go live, where we begin to have comments, so that people can visit that. Also, on August 19th, the Comprehensive Plan Task Force will be meeting, and with the staff and the consultant, for its first meeting. And those of you who are on the task force may already know it. I have not seen the list. I think tomorrow night, the mayor will be making an announcement as to who has been included on the Comprehensive Plan Task Force. I've not yet seen it, so I don't know who they may be. But on August 20th, at 6:30, at World Outreach Church, we will have our first community-wide kickoff meeting, and that's open to the public. It's in, everybody, everybody is invited to attend that. You are welcome to come. I don't think that there's any particular reason why you have to sign up in the... I don't think that there's any particular reason why you have to sign up in advance. You just come on to the World Outreach Church, arrive at 6:30 for sign-in and begin. On August 21st, starting at 5 o'clock PM in this room, there will be a joint meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council and the Planning Commission with our consultant to talk about the comprehensive plan. So, that's three things, actually four things that are getting going. It's going to be a very active week. There will also be some interviews going on. The consultants will be hitting our, or coming into our community as a team. They've got a lot of places to go, a lot of people to see, a lot of things to do, and a lot of meetings to hold. There will be some additional announcements. This is sort of a thumbnail sketch to give you a heads-up, to get a little bit of a publicity on our television. You should be getting some more communications by email. I've already sent you two announcements, basically the same thing. You should have received them by email from me. These are also posted on the city's website. So, this project is getting underway. It's going to be exciting, so hold on to your hats and get ready to participate. We need your help.
Well, it's a, it's a very important procedure that'll be going on for some time and, you know, set the course for the community for many years to come, so we appreciate all your hard work and the staff that's down on this already, and I know there's a lot more work left ahead, so we're looking forward to participating in it. Any more, excuse me, any more business, Mr. Adalot?
No, sir.
There's no further business. We stand adjourned.